Okay, welcome to this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors this Tuesday, May 6, 2025 at 3:00 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Toffinelli, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We only have one item on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, would you read it out for us?
Item number one is an action item from Integrated Waste Management. Receive a presentation from Raftellus on the commercial parcel fee study and number two, direct integrated waste management, to proceed with a with a Proposition 218 Notice of Public Hearing for Commercial Parcel Fee Increase and set a public hearing on or about June 25, 2025 to consider whether to implement the commercial fee increase.
Ms. Kashi, where is yours?
I have, thank you, Board Chair, respective members of the board, Jennifer Kashi, Director of Integrated Waste. First off, thank you very much for taking time out of your schedules to hear this item today. I appreciate it. Just a little background of how we've gotten here. On July 19, 2022, your board directed Integrated Waste Management to secure a consultant for a comprehensive review and a cost of service fee study to determine the proportionate cost for the beneficiary parcels of the county solid waste disposal system. Subsequently, on October 18, the Board of Supervisors, your board, authorized a professional services agreement with GBB to perform the directed review. The purpose of this review was to develop a document that clearly identified the strengths, deficiencies, and opportunities that we had within our solid waste system. At that time, the solid waste parcel fee had not been adjusted for 32 years. The review determined that the county had a very good system in place, but it was severely underfunded, and to ensure that we could continue to deliver the services we were, it was recommended that a fee revision take place. Your board decided to adopt the residential fee structure and adopted a modified fee structure for the commercial properties that aligned with the methodology of the residential fee determinations. That's what brings us today forward is, once you had directed IWM to bring back the commercial fees, we did secure Raftellus, who was our prior consultant for the cost of fee study, to continue the commercial evaluation and determinations. And we have today completed that that analysis, and we're prepared to present to you today what those recommendations are. At this time, I will turn it over to Terry Bavary, who's with Raftellus. He was working on the team back in 2023 when we did our initial cost of service study and fee analysis, and he has continued to work on the project with us since then. So I will turn it over to Terry to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer. Just testing the microphone that you can hear me. Everyone can hear me okay?
Can you actually hang on? You're a little bit low. Just a second. I know.
Sure.
That's better.
Is this better?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. First, I'm going to share my screen now as well. Can I just get a confirmation that you're able to see the title slide of the presentation for this afternoon?
We do see it. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So first of all, I'd just like to thank Jennifer and the county and you all for allowing us the opportunity to present to you today on the follow-up to the, you know, 2023 study that resulted in the 2024 parcel fee. I think Jennifer, you know, did a good job summarizing some of the background. We're going to run through a little bit of that with you. Then we're going to step everyone through our methodology, our analysis, and then ultimately our recommendations. To go along with this presentation, we had prepared a report that touches on many of the same things we'll be discussing during today's presentation. So just before I get into the full presentation, I do want to recognize that along with me today on this presentation is my colleague Sarah Neely, who was the key person involved in the last cost of service study with me as well as the update to this evaluation. Another member of our team member who can be here today, Enrico Camilli, was also integral to the evaluation for this study, and just want to recognize that. Thank you. So the background of our evaluation is that during the 2023 study, we did an evaluation as a sub consultant to GBB, the prime on the engagement. They are skilled in operational evaluations and performed evaluation. You can see some images of the three of the six transfer stations that the county operates as well as the landfill. When we performed that study, we had identified the need to fund expansions to the landfill as well as fund operating costs, which culminated in the, you know, recommendations on the parcel fees. I'll talk a little bit more about that process in the next slide, but one of the consequences of that was the study had recommend further review of the commercial parcel fee waste generation factors to support full implementation of the prior, and I'm going to refer to it as the fiscal year 2024 cost of service study, since that was the year that the cost of service was determined for. The key factors that we rely upon for apportioning the commercial parcel fees within the parcel fee system or structure are known as equivalent residential unit or ERUs, and I'll be referring to that terminology throughout the presentation, so just wanted to define it at the outset. So just some background about the 2024 cost of service study. We had recommended a parcel fee per equivalent residential unit or ERU of $277.30. That recommendation at the then time that was adopted is actually lower than the full recommendation that was identified. We had some support from the Board of Supervisors to look at a variety of options to try to minimize that increase. Prior to the implementation of this fee, we had a roughly $150 parcel fee, which as Ms. Kashi pointed out, hadn't been increased for a significant period of time and was overdue to be raised to ensure financial sustainability. However, and you'll notice in the presentation slide to the right, there was a prior classification or ERU system for a variety of different commercial parcels, but there's some challenges with that prior system. One, we needed to be able to link it to recommend commercial parcel fees as part of last study. Two, if we wanted to develop a system like this, a similar system like this, we would have to link it to the land use codes, and we would need data upon the waste generation. During the study, we just didn't have all the detail of that information to support a recommendation that varied the commercial parcel fees. So we limited the increase to the fees not to exceed a certain amount as disclosed in the cost of service study, which would be included as an appendix to the current report that we've submitted as part of this study. Based on that background, we performed this evaluation. As Ms. Kashi pointed out, we completed our study, and so we're just want to run everyone through our methodology and findings for your and the public's understanding. The processes can be broken down into maybe a five-step approach. The first step was developing the waste categories for each of the land use codes. The second was to identify the waste generation ratios based on franchise hauler billing data. The third was to portion the commercial waste tonnages that are reported as a commercial class as a whole back to the waste generation categories developed in step one. Then step four is to correspondingly calculate the commercial ERU factor based on the apportioned waste generation, and then the ERU factors are then used to develop and apportion the commercial parcel fee itself. And we'll run you through each one of these steps in order. So in step number one, there were some key objectives. We wanted to simplify the total number of categories that existed. We wanted to ensure that they tied to land use codes because of the administrative complexities related to having multiple varieties of codes, not to mention that, you know, having a smaller sample size of parcels within a category can mean that, you know, the next parcel that were going to come onto the system, their demands may not be consistent with the others. So we tried to keep these groupings to a fairly sizable number of parcels within each. All of these factors were considered when working with staff and developing the various categories that you see before you. Once we've identified these categories, we went back to the land use codes, and we signed each one of them with county staff assistance to every commercial land use code. We don't have that detail broken out in this presentation, but it is included as part of the report as an appendancy that details every land use code and what categories are assigned for members of the public and everyone to study. In the second step, once we've identified the land use codes, we then identified the waste generation categories by land use codes. We then gathered hauler billing data for collection in the county, which is the best proxy for waste generation by category of customer that we could develop. We were able to do this by measuring the or identifying the address for every one of the haulers, commercial customers, identifying the land use codes, and then assigning the categories. And the table that you see to the right summarizes that work effort. So you can see that we've got a parcel category called general with, you know, 124 customers that the hauler was collecting for, out of a total of about 462 in this sample size that we were exploring. And then you can see all the number of customers for the different categories that we had. You'll notice as well that we summarized all of the weekly cubic yards of trash collection that were reported by the hauler for all these different categories, and then we were able to identify what percentage each category represented as a percentage of the whole of the cubic yards being collected. So in other words, we're utilizing data on what is the bin size and how frequent where, you know, the hauler is collecting that bin as a proxy for the ultimate waste generation within the system as a basis. And we use the ratios to then, in the next step, apportion the tonnages. So you'll notice the table to the right carries the waste generation ratios over by code, and then we apportion the reported tons that we relied upon for the 2024 cost of service study by those codes, and then we converted the tonnages to pounds in the last column. So that simply takes the, in the second column, we're taking that 6,003.12, and we're allocating based on the percentages in the first column to the categories below, and then in the last column, we're multiplying that by 2,000 pounds to get the pounds conversion ratios. That becomes important in the next step of the process. In the next step of the process, we take those pounds and we divide by the total number of parcels that are identified as parcel-paying commercial fee properties, which we determined the land use code and then incorporated into all these different categories. We can't break out all the lines because the table would be too large for a presentation, but in our report, we've included an appendancy that shows this breakdown in more detail. We then divide column A by column B to get the pounds per parcel. In column D, the last column, we're taking column C, the pounds per category, and dividing that by roughly a little less than a ton or 1,814 pounds. This amount of waste generation, what was identified as part of the last 2024 cost of service study for residential waste generation by customer. And so on the basis of the ratio of a residential customer's demand, we can get what I referred to earlier, defined earlier, as an ERU or an equivalent residential unit. And so general parcels, for example, represent about six times the demand as a residential unit, and industrial would be 10 times a residential unit, and so on and so forth. We did incorporate or include a vacant category, but that was just for informational purposes, and we didn't include a fee for it, but just to disclose it because there were some in the data, we couldn't align everything, and there are probably some vacant parcels that are identified based on the addresses getting collected, but they may be tied to other businesses. So we just wanted to be transparent about all the data in case anyone had a question about that in this table. Now that we've identified the ERUs by these general categories, we can now assign in our next step, our final step, the adopted 2024 cost of service rate of $277.30 back to all of the different categories based on their ERU factors. So column B, the second column, is effectively taking column A times the 277 to determine what those fees represent. And then we show you that if you were to follow through with the recommendations for the commercial parcel fee, that if we were to fully apply these fees to the identified parcels, we're going to generate approximately $1.88 million, which was consistent within, you know, less than $100,000. I think it's within $20,000 or so of the original expectation or target for the commercial class for the 2024 cost of service study. So this gave us confidence that the methodology is going to produce the revenue that we originally targeted as part of the original 2024 cost of service fee implemented, implementation. So with that, we wanted to recommend to ensure full cost recovery from the commercial class, that you consider the recommendation for the commercial parcel fees that we've just presented. The, as I mentioned before, the proposed fees are expected to generate approximately $1.8 million in additional annual revenue to fully implement the findings of the original 2024 cost of service study. And we'd also recommend that the county periodically review the solid waste parcel fees every three to five years to ensure appropriate cost recovery by class of customer. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to change this fee, but we're just recommending that you periodically review that. And at this time, you know, for our next steps, we're recommending to mail the 218 notice, hold the public hearing, and if approved, follow through with implementation for the 2026 tax year. With that presentation, we'd like to now open it up for any questions that you may have concerning our study and evaluation.
Who'd like to go first? Supervisor Stopper.
I guess I've been voluntold. Yeah, there's a lot of things that have come up on this. You know, I appreciate the work. I see the background, the information. I think it's good, solid work, you know, and to the end that you've put the numbers to businesses, I agree with your methodology to that point. And if we could go back to the list of types of businesses, please?
Yes.
This is something that, you know, when we're originally discussing this separate, Gary had brought up, and then I sort of started diving down this rabbit hole. And so, real quick, I have a question for council. If at this point, with the work they put in and everything, I mean, it's put together in a way so that it can be mailed out for the Prop 218 notices. If we decide as a board we want to make any changes on how we structure this, will that set us back on the mailing of the Prop 218?
So-
And at that point, it would set us back a year.
Yeah, I think the shortest answer to your question is yes, in all likelihood it would. There is 45-day notice is required before the public hearing after these get mailed, and so the mailing would have to happen this week in order to implement this for this coming fiscal year. So obviously, any significant changes or tweak or whatever to the methodology or to the study would take longer than-
Yeah, yeah. And at that point, we'd be set back one fiscal year for implementation.
But with that, it's, and understanding, getting to this point, the last two years, I'm not, it's no fault in anybody's, but proceeding into this, I think the discussion should maybe start a little bit earlier so that we're able to, you know, give the input as a board and then possibly make those changes as, so, like Gary did this right there, you know. But it's good work to this point. So I'll bring it past that. That's legal. I think that with the list of businesses that you had up there and the types, I think there could be a little bit more separation. So that, like, Gary brought up mom and pops businesses, and when, you know, a small, little mom and pops general store, a few employees, you know, at the most, like, let's say eight or nine, as opposed to Save Mart or, you know, grocery outlet, produces far less as a whole when it comes to waste. And I believe that, you know, fair, it's not the word I'm looking for, but I think that there should be a different level there of separation. And would you be able to, you know, put down that list of businesses, there could be a separation there for going through the assessor's office to implement those. So I think that maybe moving forward with this right now, but I personally, I don't know if we should, it's a decision of the board as a whole whether to punt it for a whole year. I think that may be inequitable, but I'm talking about equity when it comes to people, small mom and pops businesses. So I think that that separation, so that someone that's doing $800 in retail a day isn't helping carry someone that's doing $20,000 in retail a day per se, you know, gross. Those are just imaginary numbers. Don't tie me to any of those. But I think we can make it more equitable for the whole and not dive too far down the rabbit hole, because at the same time, we don't want to open the door for everyone, well, I don't do this and they do. Yeah, well, I pay just as much school taxes as the person that has 10 kids going to school. So, you know, taxes, Gary made, and fees are different. Gary made that point to me before, but I think there's the same understanding behind it, you know, is we can't always make it equitable, but at the same time, when we have the opportunity to, I would like to put the work towards those ends. And he said that for review, every three to five years is good, so we can stay up on fees, which is what put us in this situation so that now we're working to pay back the money that we had to open the cell so we can retain it for the use of the people as a whole for Calaveras County. I think we should have a structure in there, and council should, you know, let me know if this is possible. I think we've done it, or not us, but I've seen other counties done it with other things, is kind of like a cost of living adjustment, but it is the cost of doing business adjustment, and stated into this when we put out the 218, so that, let's say, every three years, it goes up a certain amount of percentage. But the board has an opportunity to bring it back and say, hey, the costs haven't gone up that much, so we can't take more money than it costs to do service to the people, so we're going to reduce that amount. Or it's going a little bit more, now we have to do, you know, go through the full process. So I'm not sure if there's a-
That's certainly something, I mean, as you know, Supervisor Stopper, what we can't do is obviously charge more than the, you know, proportional costs of, for that parcel. There are some ways, if my memory serves from when we looked at this two years ago into the study, there are some ways of building in some increases, so long as that is noticed when the notice goes out. I will be honest with you, I don't recall off the top of my head whether a cost of living is something we can do, but we can absolutely look, we can absolutely look at that. If the board's direction today is ultimately to, you know, come back at a later date with changes, that's something that we can look at in the meantime and let the board know.
I think moving forward with what we have now is beneficial to the people and us, and us possibly going back and thinking about the structure again and having board input more.
Sorry, I think your mic is off.
Here, who's that? Okay. Anyway, Mike, can you hear me now?
I can hear you faintly.
Okay.
But I can still hear you.
Well, my mic's working, and I'm-
Okay.
My wife tells me not to yell, so.
I can hear you better now.
I'm not yelling. But that said, good work. I think we can put more thought into it in the future, make it more equitable for the people as a whole, but not dive too far down the rabbit hole. And I would like to consider putting forward a cost of doing business adjustment on a percentage rate over so many years based on what, you know, over years, the cost of doing waste costs, and then opening it up so that we don't have to have this Prop 218 hearing every, so, as often as we do, or if we end up with a different board later, because as it says, they put in the landfill, what, 1991, right?
Yes.
These cost adjustments are the first time they're being done.
That's correct.
And I think that's partially not to blame with staff as much as turnover on boards, turnover on staff. Things get forgotten about because it's, there's a place for the trash to go now, you know? But then, you know, before I even started here, I was hearing from the guys down at the landfill, we don't have enough money to keep enough of our heavy equipment going to be able to do the job. So I think that's a good tool to be built in as a whole.
I would agree. And if I could add something, just a point of clarity, when you had mentioned the different levels between, you know, a large grocery store and a mom and pop or something like that, I think it's important to note that this fee is attached to the property owner, not the business owner. So I think that that is important to remember, that it is for the property owner and not those that are renting a business, are renting a building for a business themselves.
And I completely hear that. But at the same time, let's go to something that we discussed before. There's certain businesses that are done through, let's say, administrative use permit or a conditional use permit that are actually end up on parcels where they wouldn't normally operate. Let's just say it's one of the most expensive one there. And they're after, at that point, if they get a conditional use permit, then that can be applied through the assessor's office to that parcel specifically, can it not?
The conditional use permit, I would have to, I would have to get more information on the conditional use permits.
How do you enter all these uses into the system?
Those are based on use codes, so- Those are based on use codes, so i- if you're referencing, like, if it's categorized as a restaurant, let's say, and it's now an office space or something, um, there, there is a property review, um, that can be done during this, through the assessor's office. It does not come through integrated waste, it's all done in the assessor's office.
Exactly.
So I think at that time, the, the review would happen in a conditional use permit situation on a property, the same as it's switching from office spaces or re- or restaurant. And then the fees applied through that process.
Yeah, I think the, the workflow, uh, for lack of a better term, is that if, if someone's land use approval then triggered a change in the assessor's use code, then it would flow to what IWM does in terms of applying the fee.
So I think we have the tools in place, we just haven't thought about going through the process like somewhat like I'm explaining. On rudimentary terms, from my perspective, because I don't have my hands and I'm not specialized in your department or the assessor's office, so. I think, but from what I'm hearing, we have the tools to make this work. And I think that consideration of this in the future would make it more equitable for the people of Calvers County, like the mom and pop shops.
Understood.
I, I had a couple of quick questions regarding methodology, if I could. So, do our haulers have any way of saying how much is actually in a bin? Or are we just calling bins or bins? 'Cause I know, I mean, the business I run, sometimes there are two bags in that bin when the, when the truck comes by. Is there a way of calculating?
No, there's not. And I, and I can let, from a methodology standpoint, I'll let Terry respond to that, but we don't know exactly how much is in that bin each time. Um, but we do know the frequency of collection, um, and the size of the bin.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and ba- ba- basically, um, you know, um, garbage, garbage trucks do not have scales on them to know, uh, the amount of waste. Um, you know, you have some systems out there that sometimes the haulers may estimate what the, uh, percent of the container filled it was, but it's an eyeball estimate. Um, there isn't that much technology out there that I'm aware of that can really do that, although the camera technology is getting better these days. But, um, to, to answer your question, in short, we don't have, um, any sort of way to know precisely the amount of waste being generated at the specific parcel or property level. We know what the total waste generation is by the class of customer because that material is getting weighed at, uh, you know, uh, the, the landfill. But, uh, you know, a- absent that, we've got to allocate it back based on that. That's the best, uh, localized data that we know of, uh, that corresponds to waste generation.
Thank you, Terry. Um, and so I run a business and I would argue that I know how much, personally, how much garbage I generate for one ERU. I would say that this business, I mean, ultimately, probably, in my estimation, it would be like a two or a three ERU, but it's slated as a six. So, in this process, would people be able to appeal? And, and would there be some sort of way of, of rejigging that business? Or is it, I'm not sure I'm asking-
Currently, we don't, we hadn't contemplated as part of the evaluation, um, you know, kind of an appeals process, other than if they weren't, uh, you know, originally coded in the land use code appropriately and they feel like they're a different code that can, um, initiate a review process. And I think, um, Ms. Cashy can probably speak to that a little bit better. Um, it's certain some, it's certainly something we could try to think about. But, you know, one, one, and I'll, I'll speak a little bit to Supervisor Stopper's comment. One of the biggest challenges we have is we don't, you know, we would have preferred to maybe have done it based on square footage. Um, but that data doesn't really exist for us, uh, to be able to try to create, uh, different structures. We're sort of a little bit limited in that sense. And so we're creating, um, uh, the, the best system we think that we can with the data that exists, um, you know, for the fee recommendation. Um, so, I mean, I, I would just offer, maybe, um, Ms. Cashy wants to, you know, comment additionally, but that's, but yeah, we hadn't really developed, um, a, a formal sort of appeals process, uh, determination as part of this, other than what I just mentioned.
Okay.
Supervisor Stopper.
To, to that point, because, like they said, picking up the, the, the bins, trash cans and everything else, they don't, you know, they don't know what it weighs and they put, it's put into the hole, right? So we have yardage. But when they do it, they do it by tonnage, you know? When they, when they start figuring it, when it goes into the landfill, which, you know, I don't know how tonnage applies as opposed to yardage because it fills the landfill, but some things crumple up smaller. That said, um, you know, going through that process and the, kind of the direction we already gave, the information is there for square footage, it's just we hadn't asked about it prior and we didn't give them our, our business license people and the building department with the square footage so that they could put that into the equation. I think their math is sound and their methodology is sound. We're just adding to it now. And that was why I asked for, like, you know, more warning on our next Prop 218 so that we can put in our opinions and get more of the information to get the, uh, answer out of the equation and methodology that we would like. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. And then when we start saying, like, you only do so many bags, you know, as opposed to someone else. We have to be careful going down that rabbit hole and, and letting people have an appeal process 'cause we will be trying to put a different price on every different business across here. And then when someone wins an appeal, their price goes down. So then we have to collect the money where it goes back up. So I think, you know, that's why I'm being careful about, like, cha- putting in too many different uses because then, you know, we won't find that final answer that pays for the service and stays flat so we can do it as cheaply for everyone as possible.
I also think, just one other thing to contemplate there, I agree with you Supervisor Stopper, and then I think the other concern is, is the li- I could foresee that being a logistical nightmare. Um, because, for instance, right, so in, on a given week, you may only have two bags of trash, but then what's to say that's not an outlier? So how are we gonna, are we gonna, like, come way at your business for a six-month period? You know, so I- Yeah, yeah, send a private investigator out to see how much trash is there. So I do think those are, um, things that we have to bear in mind as well, just how that, if that could even operate logistically.
Do we have any other comments?
Um, I appreciate the work that you all have done on this. It is very well done and clear. Um, I think we all know there's a lot of factors that have put us thirty-two years behind. That's unfortunate, but here we are. And I would just, yeah, ask that in the future, we try to stay ahead of this and be watching it um, more closely and implementing in steps.
Supervisor Tovinelli, nothing? I saw you reaching for that button, come on.
First off, um, your comment about property owners being charged, you don't think that's gonna go back on the businesses? They're just gonna absorb it, take it, especially if they own the property and there's five or six businesses in there, there are small mom and pops plus a larger business and they've gotta pay, what, if it's their, if it's a store or retail, twenty-seven, twenty-seven oh seven, um, a year? They're gonna pass it off to them, so I don't care who you bill to. The mom and pop shops are gonna be the ones paying the bill for it 'cause it's gonna reflect on, on their, their, uh, rent. Um, and I, you know, I, I know we need the money. I know that, um, to keep this open, um, I, I understand the mythology of it, but I, I don't agree with how the concept of it coming together how it is. Trying to compress everything, all these things into small categories, into one category when I think it could have been spread out a little bit more based on, on, uh, of course, I think the mythology may be there, um, on, on some different ways of doing things here, um, cutting us apart. Because you have a lot of mom and pop stores that are in business establishments or, um, um, like on Main Street. In Valley Springs, where Bruegers is, um, they all use one bin in the back. But they're all gonna be charged the same fee. Um, and a lot of them are small businesses that don't generate a whole lot. But they're gonna be the same as the other business, um, like Bruegers that may, it's a restaurant that may, and they're only paying twenty-two ninety-four, according to this. So I, I think it needs to be developed a little bit more and which, which is more fair to businesses as, as their size and what they generate. Um, I, I do not, I, I just can't grasp my hand on a, a small mom and pop store absorbing twenty-seven twenty-seven a year. I, I just can't grab that. It just doesn't, and, and that, and, and they're paying the same as a grocery outlet or Marvell or, or Spences or whatever, um, or Ace Hardware. It, it, it just doesn't, to me, seem fair. Or, as we said in the Pledge of Allegiance, justice for all. It just doesn't seem that way to me. I'm sorry, that brings a smile to somebody's face, but I, I'm trying to look at keeping these people in business that that's their business and this is a huge absorption for them to take. And whether it's the property owner or not, they're eventually gonna be paying it regardless. So, um, I, I, I just have an issue with that. Um, I'm not sure we separated enough here on the categories that we have. Um, maybe it should be store one, store two. Um, I, I just, I'm just worried about putting them out of business. And it could send them out of business.
Supervisor Stopper.
Just another point, like with those, he, he brought up the, you know, Bruegers and that, that pla- that Plaza style right there. I assume most of that's all one parcel? Yeah. Right?
Uh, s- some of those shopping centers are actually, each one has its own parcel number.
Oh, I, oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Right.
But it dep- yeah, so just, just to be clear, it's a parcel fee, it attaches to the parcel. Um, Ms. Cashy is absolutely correct that there's, we're gonna see some variation, right? In some instances, you have one parcel that's got multiple businesses on it and there would be a parcel, and then in others, it's, right? But the, the fee corresponds to the parcel.
That's correct.
Right. So there's not one parcel out there in Calvers County that has multiple businesses on it?
I mean, I-
Yeah, I mean, there's, there, there, there's parcels out there with more, more than one, like, it's one building. Julie, come on! Get up here, you're the one that's always down there. I, I'm sorry, Sarah.
No, so Julie Moss is Assistant County Counsel. Um, I think there's, there is, this is, as, as Supervisor Stopper was saying, it is applied per parcel, but there is variation. There are some parcels that have multiple businesses, that are multiple tenants but a single parcel, and there are some that have multiple busi- e- each individual business separated.
Yes, yes, so-
Each parcel because that's when they got their license.
Supervisor- Excuse me, uh, when, when they got their permit and where they're going and-
No, that's separate, so Supervisor-
That's what I wanted to hear.
I hear a, I'm hearing that.
Yeah, no, and, and so, yes, you answered my question, 'cause it's, I understand the Plaza now and I, I did think that was one parcel, but that's been re-explained to me. But what you just brought up is where I'm going with this. At that point, there's a review on that property and it's applied two separate fees for each business. Is that correct?
So there could be some properties, if it's, it's based on where the lot lines are.
Yeah.
So Supervisor Tovinelli, if somebody gets an AUP to run a business on the, on the parcel, you're right that AUPs run with the land and they go with the parcel, but that doesn't necessarily, that doesn't necessarily mean that, let's say, there's one business that got an AUP to do, I don't know, an auto paint shop or something, and then there were other businesses on there. That would not necessarily mean that no other types of businesses would be allowed on that parcel. You could have an AUP for an auto paint shop, but there could still be other businesses on that same parcel. So getting a permit doesn't result in a s- a new subdivision of property, is what I'm trying to say.
Perfect, Julie, you answered my question. You're very well.
Is there-
So, so, yeah, you know, you're good, you're awesome, I appreciate you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. So to that point, the, I'm sorry, here, I'll talk into this microphone. This, we're get- we're getting feedback right here with both of them on. Uh, so, in these instances, my assumption is there's a review of the property because, you know, in this instance, and they would be applied two fees. Because you have two different businesses on the property generating more trash. No, it's not? Well, that's-
I'm sorry, I, I think-
All kinds of businesses on one piece of property.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's-
We, they are, the parcel fee is not per business, it's per parcel, regardless of how many businesses happen to exist on a parcel. There are some parcels that will be one business.
Can I see that scheme up there on the screen right now? 'Cause we're talking about it on different businesses, sorry, go ahead, I'm just- Yeah. I'm just following up on what you were saying and I'm, I, I'm saying there's the methodology and make this work. So, general, okay. So we don't have anything that covers multiple businesses up there right now. So, in, in the ki- in the scenario, let's say, I have an industrial property, right? And there's all, I like, in, in many aspects, there's a lot of businesses that can be done in other different types of land use that can also fall within industrial because industrials, you know, but, you know, I'm not gonna put a restaurant there, right? So, that said, I have a quarry and then I have a paint shop on it. And then, along with the paint shop, the auto body. And I have a mechanics shop on it because industrial properties are big and I can put all those type of things on an industrial property. We have multiple uses generating more than the rest of the industrial places because they have the room there. And they're benefiting off of us charging a mom and pops grocery store based on averages that's paying the same as a supermarket.
So, I, I just wanna, I do wanna clarify that Prop 218, I mean, it's definitely a policy call for the board, what they're comfortable with. Prop 218 doesn't require exact, perfect calculation for, for each property. So, get, so, right, so it's, it's a policy call, how comfortable the board is with the possibility of there being differences between parcels where some of them are going to have more intense uses going on than the typical industrial parcel and some of them are gonna maybe have less, but they're classified as industrial. They're, but basically, the, just like the parcel fee has always been, like any parcel fee, it goes with the, with the APN.
I, I, I hear you and we all understand that already, Julie, I appreciate that, thank you. We, and we're talking averages and you answered my question. What I'm saying now is, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different types of uses, you know? We could add use number ten and use number eleven. Ten is multiple businesses on same parcel, 'cause they would generate more. And we'd, we factored that in based off of however many, two or three in the county, I don't know. And then we do a small store retail based on whatever the, the policy call the board makes, you know, for number eleven type of use. And bring that down, which in fact would bring the large store retail up to make up the difference to a certain degree.
So I think, and I, I apologize, if everyone else already realizes this and it's only me that has to keep reminding myself, then I, I apologize. But two things that I think are important to bear in mind. One, I'll just say, my brain keeps slipping into, like, zone, zoning- One, I'll just say my brain keeps slipping into like zone, zoning, and these are not zoned, right? These are assessors, land use category. And then that I think is the other important point to remember. And I think Supervisor Stoppard, while we certainly could, or you know, IWM could certainly come up with a different methodology with eleven, twelve, thirteen, twenty-one categories as opposed to these ten, these are the existing assessors, land use categories. That's what they're using to get to, to do this study and to get to these numbers. So while I'm not going to sit here and tell you to say that it's impossible to do it a different way, it's just going to create, require creating something new as opposed to using existing categories. Is that a good, would you agree with that?
Yes, yes, and I, I think we have, you know, some, some limitations there, I would say. But I think it's important to remember, just as like a resident, in the event they have a calamity, let's say, and their house burns down, they do go to the assessor's office, alert them of a change, and then that land use code changes. So that is how a land use code is, is done through the assessor's office. So it really has to be initiated within the assessor's office for that change to occur. And then, and subsequently, the appropriate fee applied in my department, right?
Right.
So I, I, again, I think there, you know, to Sarah's point, there is a, a review process that would have to start in the assessor's office for a land use code to be changed.
Yes. And, and, and they just had to change all those when we just changed the general plan?
Not the land, not the land use codes in the property tax system.
Okay. So there's not any different zonings now as opposed to before, so they don't have different codes?
Within the property tax system, those land use codes don't change with that. From my knowledge, my understanding.
That can't be true. Julie, thank you for clarifying what's going on here because I, I was, had a little bit of misunderstanding, but let me, let me ask this. If, if I have a parcel in Valley Springs, it's a small parcel. And I put a business in it, say a store. And then I'm going to be charged, what, if we go forward, twenty-seven, twenty-seven for that parcel, and it only has large enough for one business. We move down the street, like I said, where Bruegers is, and that's all one parcel for that shopping center. That shopping center with all those businesses in it are just going to be charged the same as me as one store?
That could be the case depending on if the store is classified the same as the parcel that has all of the, the mini mall in it. So if you had something that fit in the general category that was on a standalone on the parcel, then yes, the owner of that parcel would pay the fee. And if there was another parcel that happened to have six businesses on it that was categorized in the land use code as general, then that parcel owner would be paying the same, the same, the same amount.
Not twenty-seven. So that's why I'm saying justice because I don't think this category is, is, will, will work for what we're trying to accomplish here. You, you have this one small business and there are several that are small businesses on, on one property paying a tremendous amount more just to average out for these other businesses that are paying a smaller fee. It's just average it out to get it, and, and I don't think, I think there's another way to do it. And that's what I was trying to say earlier, but it wasn't coming, that the small mom and pop stores that, that i- i- it could affect them tremendously and put them out of business.
So, for instance, let's take the Marvell Shopping Center.
Okay.
Each one of those have their own APN. Each one of those office spaces have their own APN.
I knew that, but I, that's why I brought it up earlier and.
But just, you know, so it, it, that is not one parcel. There is individual parcels within there, so.
There are parcels that have multiple businesses on.
The Bruegers, the Bruegers Shopping Center is one parcel. And we already know that because the guy tried to put his fifth, he sold it, but the fifth, remember when I came to God, I don't know what to say. But that's all one parcel. So they're, they're only paying whatever their categories as a general or whatever or a restaurant. I don't know how that parcel will be charged because they have a restaurant on it and they have other item stores on them. So is it going to be charged as a restaurant or is it going to be charged as stores and retail?
It would depend on their land use code that the assessor's office assigns.
They have.
That's correct.
It's probably going to be general is what they're going to be probably under. So, so it's, it's not, it doesn't seem to me to be equal, even the Marvell one and each one of them having to pay twenty-seven, seven, twenty-seven. And the one person that has one parcel versus the Main Street one, there's probably only be sixteen fifty-six with all those businesses on it. It, it doesn't seem to me to be equal out. And I don't know how you're going to get to that or make it where it's at least a way that, that is, is responsible for everybody. I guess I'm missing a word here, but I, I, it just doesn't seem to be equal.
I think, so. I, I, Karen and I are, I think, saying the same thing, just different ways. And so it gets to the point, once again, that I brought up earlier. So review of this, because it's a policy decision. And like again, Jennifer, you've done great work. I am actually proud of, you know, the people you brought in, where we're at, we have a landfill that's functional still, you know? No one, no one thought it could be done. And I was like doubtful if we could get it done in time and you, you went miles for everyone.
You did.
And, and I can't say how happy I am with you. So when, when I'm talking tough about this fee, it's not directed at you. Or, or the people that did the work and the analysis because we gave them direction to do this. So, you know, it's pointing back at myself is what I'm saying. Okay? So the point being is I'm willing as one to work forward on this now. But when it comes to policy, I could say no and say I want it done this way. And I could even say, you know, I want it done this way, and I could get two other or three other board members to vote with me. And I could vote for something that doesn't, right? But I'm not going down that route. I, I, the methodology and the tools you're putting in place work right now. I would like to think over it more and work forward on, based on this foundation now and work to better it in the future for the people of Calaveras County. That's what I'm talking about.
I concur.
And I agree, and I think that's what I'd like to do every single day.
You do. You have.
You have. You're awesome. You took it over and it's, you're, good job.
Appreciate it.
You brought this pessimist over to being an optimist.
Supervisor Paulandor.
What happens, and I think I asked this the last time we did the 218, what happens if this does not pass? I mean, we, these are striking numbers that are going to jump. And it was already hard enough to get to where we were at now. What, what is that cost then going to be to us to, to have a look at? I don't know if we have those or prepared for those numbers, but that's going to be the reality is, you know, not every 218 passes. We just got lucky last time. And with these numbers, we're going to have some very upset individuals. I think Gary and Ben have said what I feel like most of us are feeling right now. It does come down to a policy and, and I think the goal is to keep this for the public to be able to use. Are we going to have to look at different numbers to help this 218 pass? Or are we going to let it, you know, go through the process, see if we get it? We get it, great. If we don't, are we going to come back and readjust these numbers? And so we have something successful long-term? I mean, that's what I'm worried about. We're going to be having to plug money out of the general fund.
But can I just jump in there? I think to a certain degree, I think that the county needs to take it on the chin. You can't come to people thirty-two years later and all of a sudden expect them to swallow this in a month.
No, I, yeah, it just. We did it once.
I know.
And, and, and so.
I know.
And, and we got lucky. We were honestly lucky when we did it a couple of years ago. But how are we going to do this from the monetary standpoint, from the budget standpoint? Regardless of how we feel, like, this could fail.
Well, I think it's already covered with.
Sorry. Teresa, do you want to go?
My microphone, that was to make an act of respect. There's a gremlin under the table.
And he's sitting right here.
So from a budgetary standpoint, what the consultant has done has actually done the analysis to cover the costs of the landfill. So if this doesn't go forward or fails with the 218 hearing, we will not be covering the cost of the landfill to the tune of about a million and a half dollars, which will then, every year going forward. Which there are some funds and contingencies right now that are for the future expansion and maintenance of the landfill because we're required to do that. We would be eating into that funding, so we wouldn't have the set aside for the future of the landfill, which is very concerning. So. That's exactly correct. I don't know, Jennifer, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I would, I would add, it's just the, just a reminder, the, the previous plan as proposed, when the cost of service study was done originally, there was, you know, a, a plan that was proposed within that. That plan would need to be adjusted. We wouldn't be able to maintain and roll that plan out as proposed unless we had the sufficient revenue to do that.
Thank you for explaining that again. I just want to make sure that the public hears it and understands why we are to where they, where we're at, we're just not jacking the prices up because we feel like we need to jack it up. We are, we need, there, there's a consequence on the other end too.
That's correct. And it is a, a cost of service. We're not jacking it up. We can't, we can't increase fees over what the cost of, of the service is. So that, you're correct Supervisor Paulandor.
And by no means does that mean advocating for, I just want to lay it on the table, get it in a way that the public can grasp when we're going to get hit with these questions coming out here pretty soon. And we can refer to this meeting for them to watch. So I just, thank you for explaining that. So it's on record. That's all I have right now.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yeah, I have a question for Sarah. You need a moment? Okay. If, if we move forward today to send out the public notices and have a hearing on the twenty-fourth, and it'll become before the board for an adoption. Can, can we change any of these fees at that time on the twenty-fourth and still move it forward?
So your question is whether the notices could go out this week as planned with, with these numbers?
Correct.
And then when it comes back after forty-five days for the public hearing, could the board? Well, I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty, they couldn't be higher than the notices.
Or absolutely not. And I don't think anybody here is looking at that. Unless the note that you just got said that.
No, I don't know. I haven't looked at it. No, that's an interesting question. My, and maybe one of my colleagues could have, has a ready answer for this. I, I mean typically we send, no, I don't mean we, the county, typically Prop 218 notices are sent out with the actual rate, the actual fee that is going to be imposed. I, I will be honest with you Supervisor Tofanelli, I've never looked at the specific question of whether it could surprise, just kidding, it's going to be lower. May, and, and I don't know.
But it was one of the options.
I think last time it was at this, if my memory serves, last time it was at this meeting, basically where the board authorized the Prop 218 notices to go out, you authorized them to go out with that lower, that lower fee. It wasn't at the public hearing. The notices that went out last time had the number that then was going.
Sarah?
Yeah.
I believe, I, I was the one that negotiated the lower, and it was during the public hearing.
Was it?
But that said, I ruled it.
Then yes, I guess it's fine.
I didn't make it more.
I believe, I believe this Terry, I believe that, and I, you know, it'd be good to double check it, but I, I, I believe my recollection was that we had done the 218 notice and we can validate that. And then it was at the public hearing it went lower, but.
It couldn't go higher.
I just thought that the requirement was that you can't set the rates above cost.
That's, yes, that's true, and we also can't set the rates above what the notice says. But, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm unaware of anything off the top of my head that would preclude the board from having it be lower at that point. I've just never.
I think, in one, I do, I agree that that's my sense of it from, from, I don't have a case citation, but that is my understanding as well. We could also solve the problem by noticing in a way that says it'll be a maximum of this amount, and it possibly will be lowered by the board of supervisor, so.
Did you already print the notices? Jennifer? Do you already print the notices?
Did I print the notices? The notices are printed. Yes. In order to meet timelines, you have to be prepared.
I understand why I'm not.
There's two hundred and eighteen of them going out?
No, there's four thousand five hundred.
Four thousand five hundred?
Yes.
I read two eighteen somewhere.
Nine hundred and fourteen parcels are fee payers. And as we continue to, you know, conti, I just kind of want to, you know, I think it's important to kind of go back to our foundation of, of the benefits and from the standpoint of having our own solid waste system and be able to process our own waste in a cost-effective way. I think it's super important that we identify what our goal was going into this is having a solid waste system that we can control the costs with and ensure that our residents have a responsible mechanism in place that they can dispose of their waste rather than, you know, setting it on the side of the road or something like that. So I think, you know, always it's, it's, it's helpful for us to remind us what our initial goal was going into this is to be able to manage it ourself and to ensure that we have this valuable, I, I would say it's one of our most valuable assets because we do get to control that cost of, of processing our own waste.
I concur. So nine hundred and fourteen notices. There's nine hundred and fourteen.
Each property owner must be notified because they could change.
The whole county is the whole, because it's changed the whole, whole fee structure regardless if it's just businesses.
No, it does not go out to the residential customers, only the customer class that is being affected. So it's going out to all commercial properties. In the event they receive the notice, they decide to build, then they would be subject to the fee. So that's why all commercial class receives the notice, but only nine hundred and fourteen of them currently are fee payers.
Understood, understood. So they get a vote on what potentially they end up having to pay in the future? That makes, that makes sense. Not vote, but put in.
A, a letter of opposition.
A letter of opposition.
That is correct.
And that sets our bar for.
All right, all right. Turn mine off. I don't know why it's going on today like that.
Yeah, I understand.
Could, could I just interrupt for a quick second? I wanted to clarify something. We looked up the last 218 notice just to kind of set the record straight, and I believe that it did notice at the two seventy, seven thirty. So it must have, so the 218 must have been, you know, the, the adjustments that we made to the fee must have been prior to the 218 notice. So just want to clarify that because I think I misspoke earlier.
I'm glad my memory hasn't completely failed me. Still.
We should have a vote on that.
But wait, the answer to my question is, we can, can we lower it when it comes to us?
Yeah, so I have, I have not looked at that particular question Supervisor Tofanelli. I'm unaware of any case law on that. We can certainly look between now and the public hearing. My, my gut instinct is that, not to put too fine a point on it, but I think someone would have a really difficult time seeing that it was illegal to tell them it was going to be higher and then have it actually be lower. The opposite, you know, would not be true, obviously, but.
Wait a minute, I want to take a moment.
Right, so I, I suspect, I suspect that that is permissible, but that's not something that we've researched yet.
And Gary?
And I have seen it, you know, through our work and, and our colleagues' work in the state of California where, you know, we've noticed higher on a 218 notice, not necessarily through the parcel fee approach, and then implemented maybe something less than what was noticed. You know, I, I know that, I think that's happened before, but, you know, I, you know, like I said, I, I don't, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the case law specifically on it, but I believe I've seen that before.
Supervisor Toffenelli, I was gonna just say, sometimes people do actually call in and say, "We need a parcel fee applied because we wanna use your system." And so, that does actually happen, believe it or not.
Is there any way to get a, a final on that before we break this meeting?
It's gonna impact my vote.
Yeah, it's gonna impact mine as well.
Um, if, if the board would like to take a break and we can attempt to speed research, I'm happy to take a stab at it.
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
I'd say yes, and Jen, get out the whiteout.
Can have a little whiteout party.
4,800 something times.
Counsel, how long do you think?
Um, if, if you could, if, if you could give us at least 15 minutes to start looking around, and then I'm happy to, to give you an update.
Why don't we, why don't we say?
May, can I bring something up to the board real quick, Martin? And I get where you're going, but earlier I, I was talking about like moving forward as a basis and reviewing it for next year. So, another option we have...
Definitely.
Is to do it structured so that, 'cause, Teresa, sorry, I wanna get rid of that echo. Teresa brought up a crucial point in my mind, is we're going into, and I'm gonna add to it, we're going into uncertain times, we're not sure revenue's going, and we do, and Jennifer brought up the very good point, is this is one of our major important apps, assets in the county, other than the people here, you know, you know.
I would argue also that our constituents are going into a hard time as well.
Yes, and I fully hear that. So, we need to weigh that all.
Yeah.
And, but when it, when it comes to weighing that all, our constituents at the business level are very valued, but we need to offset it at the same time. But, we as a board can decide to eat part of it. So, I'm just, I'm just saying that as a whole.
Decide whatever we want.
Yeah, 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 we could. Just so you know... We could put it in the hole. Your time constraint could be, there's another meeting scheduled here for Delta College, and we probably need to get out of here before, that's at 5:30, so.
I believe my amazing staff is already working on it, and I will go join them as soon as we break.
The board's gonna censor me.
We'll, we'll break now, and we'll be back at 4:30.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, and we are back. We're back now.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hubbard. So, we were unable to find any authority directly on point. We were unable to find anything suggesting that it would be impermissible to have it be a number on the Prop 218 notices that ultimately ends up higher than what the board sets it. You know, Prop 218 requires that folks have an opportunity to weigh, to, to decide, you know, whether they wish to object. As a practical matter, you may get over objections, right, as a result of the notice saying something higher than what it ultimately ends up being. But, you know, it's clear that the Prop 218 notice can't be, as we said before, lower than what the fee ultimately ends up being. It also can't be so vague that folks have no way of figuring out what the number would be. But, you know, we think it permissible that it have a number that ends up higher than what the board ultimately decides to impose.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, please.
I just wanted to kind of bring up, you know, just, just a reminder of our last couple of years. We, we forget over a couple of years. But, you know, when we, you don't forget. When, you know, when we, when your board adopted the residential fee structure, and we did adopt the modified commercial structure, essentially the commercial folks did get a two-year phase-in period. So, I think that is something to consider and remind ourselves, is that although the, you know, we did end up increasing commercial, we capped it at that 1512 mark, 1,512 and 17 cents, I believe. But, that was something that was, essentially they got a two-year phase-in period for that time. A lot of folks that were on commercial also got a very large reduction during this time, and they're gonna see a continued reduction because they were paying higher previously than the, the fee revision we did two years ago. So, I just wanted to kind of bring that up for awareness and a reminder that, that these fees have been essentially, in a way, phased in.
Just, just real quick, you, you're more than good to talk crap to this. That, that said, so the 1991 fee study that put forward the original fees had a higher amount for certain types of properties than they're actually paying now or would pay with this.
That is correct.
Sir?
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Lou Bumpfis. I have a business in San Andreas. It's just me and my wife that work there. Between our house and our business, we go to the dump once every two months, one truckload, every two months. It costs me $100 to go to the dump every time. Fuck it, now it's gonna cost me $500 to go to the dump. If that's the case, I'm gonna close my business. I'm gonna shut down, I'm gonna sell it, I'm gonna move out of this county, I'm gonna sell my house, I'm gonna leave. Because that is ridiculous to have to pay $500 to go to the dump every time I go to the dump. And my clients this weekend are coming from Maryland. So, you're gonna lose a lot of revenue from me because every week I have people come from all over the United States into this little town that I'm bringing them in, and they spend money all around here. So, I think what you've all said up here is very correct. We need to seriously address this, 'cause this is not fair for a guy like me to pay $500 to go to the dump. It's one truckload, every two months. Every two months. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
If you, if you, what type of business?
Tattoo shop right there in San Andreas.
Thank you.
Ms. Galino?
Hi, Board, Hubbard, our Honorable Chair. Hey, listen, I'm a little bit perplexed about this. I'm concerned of the equity to our small businesses. I would like to try and find a way to recalculate some of these fees, 'cause as you have just heard, some businesses, this is gonna wipe 'em out. There needs to be some sort of equity built in for those larger commercial complexes, shopping centers that have multiple businesses. I, I'm just very concerned, and I have, I have to say something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you been participating before Cathy from her staff? Okay, that should've been like talked about two years ago when we told you guys to do this. Like, you should've been advocating for the businesses two years ago.
I wasn't aware, I was not aware of this.
We publicly said it. We publicly gave direction two years ago. So, why is economic development just now coming into the picture when we've known this for two years this was coming down the pipe? I'm just saying, it should've been, Ben talked about being proactive. These are some of the things that if other department heads have been, are concerned about it, we gave direction two years ago for you guys to participate and make sure that these businesses were getting advocated for. So, but, it just, I think you, you could've been more useful to the last two years than now finally just, what, coming up to the podium?
My apologies.
Well, wait, just Cathy, hold on. Did anybody reach out to you to ask for your comments while this was going on?
No.
With this, this vendor that we hired? Did they ask you anything?
No.
So, so you were not part of it, not to say that you didn't ask, but you, they didn't reach out to you as the economic developer to have your input in it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stopper?
Just one quick, more quick question, you know, 'cause, you know, some, some talk with counsel about legal and, you know, codes, and I don't think I wanna mess with assessor's codes. That could get really complicated. Yeah, and, you know, I'll have to buy Lorie a couple coffees to go through that. But, that, put that aside. You brought up review in certain instances, and then they get applied, and then you apply the appropriate fee after, after the code's put in over there.
That is correct.
So, and I brought up earlier about administrative use permits and conditional use permits. So, you know, I'm, you know, not, not to tuck down any type of business, but I'm gonna bring up an example somewhere in this county, somewhere, is there's a rural residential piece of property. They're within the confines of the rules right now, and they don't go over the number, but it's under 20 acres, and they're allowed to do up to 20, or 12 venue-type business. But, they run that business on, on a rural residential property, and as long as they keep that business permit, even if the rules change in the future, they're allowed to continue that type of use, you know, so, so that we aren't just taking from them, right? That said, in that instance, a wedding venue puts out a huge amount of garbage during, even in 12 events, you know. Only those 12 events in their year, there's a huge amount that comes out of those events. Is there a review for that piece of property, and do they pay more? And, in these instances where these properties are on those, are those properties part of the noticing going out? Because you've got so many commercial properties or industrial where you're noticing, are those, are those residential properties being noticed also, rural residential?
This would be the commercial class that's gonna be noticed. You know, you could have the fairgrounds that doesn't typically always do large events, but sometimes they do do large events, right? So, I think that that's, you know, there's going to be some variance on what those, the generation is from time to time, like we had established.
The rural residential property with a business signing, are they paying more for their, for their business?
If they are zone, if they are categorized with their land use code as a commercial property, yes, they will be noticed.
But I just explained, it's a rural residential property.
Then no, they would not. If, if they are residential, and I wouldn't be able to, I would have to look at like actual individual properties to be able to really answer that accurately.
Right.
But if it's a residential, then...
You wouldn't have to go through every darn property in the county. You would go through the business licenses and see where they're applied.
Permit.
But, but that's, that's, that's something else that, I mean...
I said that, it's not the property owners that's throwing the stuff out normally. It would be the business that's actually conducting the wedding. In most cases, I would imagine.
One, one question.
Sorry. Where can you keep going, Gary? Here, I'll turn mine on.
So, everything, everything that's been said and everything that you said, just a simple answer, yes or no? Can we lower the fees if we want to when it comes on the 24th? Yes or no?
You can't ask a lawyer a yes or no question. No. Yes, I believe that the board could do that.
I appreciate that. Gary, we can do anything we want as long as you're prepared for the consequences.
Well, then, would somebody like to make a motion?
We actually, Chair Hubbard, we actually just filed this as an informational item. So, I think, but we do, I do think Ms. Cashy's looking for majority board direction, certainly, as to sending the notices out.
I won't vote, but I'll ask.
If you don't mind, I'll start at the back end with number five.
Please.
Yes. Notice it, and then we'll mess it up later.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm gonna say no.
Ideally, I would like to see the rates lowered before we send the notices out. But I don't know strategically that would fit with what Ben is thinking with sending them out.
If I may.
And messing them up.
Yeah, right. Like, right, right now, I believe that we have the ability to lower it from said price and give that direction. I don't see anything wrong with that as long as we don't, you know, exponentially raise it. But, my, my concern is $1.5 million upside down here.
Yeah.
So, I do wanna give some relief, but that's decided on how we can make the numbers work.
Okay, I'll be, okay, send the notices out.
Supervisor Randall?
Due to timing, I would say yes. We need to get those notices out and then get creative and see what we can do for our small businesses.
I'm gonna say yes.
Yeah.
With a proviso that we get to look at it. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisors. I appreciate it.
Good job, Jennifer, and I appreciate the firm's work. I don't wanna dismiss you guys and your, you guys' work. You did a phenomenal job. We could've maybe put some more thought into it earlier and gave you a lot, better direction also from our...
If it would've came to us sooner than the way, that we had some time to look at it, make some comments with you guys, you could go do, redo it with our comments and then bring it back. That would've been beneficial to me, 'cause I'm not even sure what's gonna happen on the 24th. So, thank you, thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That'll terminate this meeting. Thank you. Terminate it. Terminata.